All right, good evening everybody. Seeing at 7 o'clock we'll call this meeting to order. My purpose of this meeting today is to discuss the functions probably of the Town Hall and Russell School as according to the Historic Buildings Preservation Plan and this plan we have here from Remy, Roseanne, and Anderson. I'll start with, you just give me a second here, with old Mohawk. And I'll start off here with what the comment they have here about Russell School. Russell School is in good condition despite decades of neglect. Because of this overall lack of maintenance, serious exterior issues that would have been fermented with routine maintenance have involved into costly work. Fortunately, the building was constructed with materials that are still regarded today as the best design choices where sustainability is concerned: slate roofing and masonry. While the roof and flashing assemblies generally top such lists, there were no active leaks detected in the attic of Russell School. Further was indicated that slate repairs were performed late in 2012. The greatest concerns is centered on the potential of movement at the corners of the foundations and fire-reaching effects of poor roof and site drainage. New gutters will mitigate the presently occurring erosion of mortar joints affecting the brick walls and the stone foundation. All right, and their breakdown of cost for the exterior work, again if you remember from the last meeting, old Mohawk gave us prices on how to fix the exterior and keep the place historical. It did not address electrical, plumbing, or any of the real infrastructure of the buildings. In Russell School, the foundation work would cost $94,150. Walls, $47,520. Roofing, $81,601. Carpentry, $77,200. Windows, $57,348. Trim, $51,850. Chimney, $14,640. Stairways and porches, $120,350. And contingency, $54,465. For a total of $599,124. Let me see if I can find here, Town Hall. Russell School. Here's their executive summary for Town Hall. The exterior building, the building exterior of Town Hall is in very good condition aside for some minor exterior repairs, routine maintenance like painting and railings, pointing to capstone is all that is required to remain the integrity and prolong the service life of the building's exterior materials and components. Considering the continuous use of the building interior as Town Office says, the interior finish systems are generally in good to excellent condition. The resilient flooring is worn, discolored, mismatched, chipped, and cracked in isolated locations, but remains well adhered to the subfloor and is non-fragile. Is performing well and is in very serviceable condition. Wall paneling is generally in very good condition except for a few isolated locations where work has been performed on the underlying walls. Ceiling and floor trim is missing or has been replaced in a few isolated locations. Wholesale replacement of the wall paneling is not recommended because it is performing well and is in good serviceable condition. Hardware only needs routine maintenance and the doors are in excellent condition. I'm going to read the repairs here, but I think we've done this already with a grant from the CPA. Repoint the foundation, $1,100. Pudge coat the foundation is $6,175. Weather strip, doors, and windows, $5260. Replace telewindows, $2640. Miscellaneous welding, concrete, wall repairs, windows contingency is $2,325 and contingency is $1,750. And I think the total we took out of this book was about $22,000. I think we already took care of that with the CPA grant. Thank you. Let me keep going. Now we get here into this thing here, Remy, Roseanne, and Anderson. I can't, some of that work can't be done in the wintertime. Okay. Descriptions of the options explored. Now we're dealing with just the Town Hall and Russell School. And it says here, Town Hall functions, suggestions to relocate to Russell School. New building on new site. Alterations to Town Hall. No change, repair existing Town Hall. And for Russell School, it says, no change, repair existing school, the Town Hall. It says, see Town Hall above, and I just said that, and now we'll get into a little bit of what it costs. All right, this is going to be, please bear with me. Okay. Relocate to Russell School, $4,490,168. This is the most expensive of the options explored due to extensive work required in the school. All Town functions can reside within the building, but parking is extremely limited, and their suggestion is the current Town Hall would need to be sold. Their second suggestion, new building on a new site, $4,973,185 plus site purchase. As a new building, the facility could meet the town's needs in an attractive, energy-efficient, and handicapped, accessible, single-story building. Parking can be designed to meet the building's needs. Program changes can be easily accommodated prior to time of construction. Then another one here is underlined, which is the one they think would be a good idea, is alterations at Town Hall, $1,443,571. Although some spaces will need to be relocated to the senior center, cost not included, this is a cost-effective solution to meet the town's functions. It also includes all the repairs listed below, plus the reworking of spaces to better meet the program needs. And the last one here for Town Hall is no change, repair existing Town Hall, $1,219,806. Although the building generally appears to be in good condition, there are many items that are necessary to bring it to an acceptable standard for long-term continued use as the Town Hall. This approach does not address program changes. Now, I'm going to go to Russell School here, and it's pretty short. No change, repair existing Russell School, $5,908,166. Then it says here, Town Hall, the last option is to sell the building. Now I went through, and I just got a few things that I got out of this one here for Russell School. Three things. One is the electrical, and I took this verbatim out of the report. This building is in the worst condition electrically of the building surveyed. The recommendation is to demolish all of the electrical systems. Heating consists of two oil-fired steam boilers that appear to be in poor to fair condition. The recommendation is demolish the entire heating system. Plumbing, that's restrooms, with the exception of the water closet and lavatory in the restroom adjacent to the main entrance, replace all water closets, urinals, and lavatories in the facility. It's also been my experience that in Town Hall, it's handicapped, accessible, air-conditioned, and has an elevator already installed. So this is what I got out of the reports, and I think we'd open up the comments. Anybody out here, any questions? Anything to say? Kind of like we did in the last meeting, I thought went very well. Yes?
Susan Norris from 18 Rocky Hill Road. I'd just like to know in Town Hall, if we could hear from some of the people that have offices in there. Is the space right now what people want or do they need? Is it too crowded in there? Do we need more space for Town Hall? That's a big issue with it to me. It sounds as though it's possible to keep it, but it's, all this is okay, but is there enough space?
There was a reconfiguration in the book that this company did for us, and it moved a lot of the offices downstairs, upstairs, and reconfigured things, and it seemed to have a better workflow. I don't know if, Joni, did you see that?
No.
No? Can you put that up, Peg? She can show you what it is now, and then she can show you what the configuration would be.
But I will say this, from all the times I sit there and I'm at a meeting, when a trailer truck goes by, that little link shakes.
And it's shaking more each day.
That's the first floor of Town Hall. Second floor, and then this is the floor coming up.
That's the basement, I think.
So this would make them move downstairs, the treasurer. Conservation. Conservation, and then there's men's rooms, restrooms, those are reconfigured. Conservation Commission, Town Clerk, Board of Assessors, and Town Collector.
So Town Clerk's paperwork, is it a slightly larger space? Because currently the Town Registers has no place to work in.
It is a bigger space, right Peg? The Town Clerk's office.
You have to look at the square footage, just there, and kind of square footage.
That's the collector. Can you move down to the Town Clerk's office? Over there. That was enlarged.
It was? I don't think so.
You have it in here.
Town Hall. Town Clerk, and the new one here is 241 square feet. How big was it in the old?
217 square feet.
A little bit bigger.
We have to take space for the Registers. Currently, we have to schedule our work around when there's nobody else at that spare desk. It's always kind of a dilemma there. It would be really helpful to have some of the space. I can't really, my hair is dead, I don't know how much more space that did that added.
30 square feet.
How many?
30 square feet.
30.
One desk, or what? And when you have to get out from around the corner, if somebody's in the file department you're trapped in it, it's just really difficult figuring. It can't be any wider than this.
Well, these were only just some of the ideas, one that they did, and then how did they reconfigure the top floor, Peg?
This is the second floor now. Town Administrator and my offices moved upstairs into the meeting room for confidential meetings. The second floor meeting room looks like it's based opposite.
Mostly what happens is they took the hallway, and they made the hallway narrower, and gave it extra space over to the offices. So that's what they did, and recommendations for Town Hall in this one.
These are fairly wide hallways.
Okay, and the Town Clerk, if they moved the whole thing over to Russell School, it would be 314 square.
That's not my vote, even though it's $5 million.
$6 million. There you go, you asked the question, trying to give you some answers.
Do you have any comment, Jon?
I got a lot of them. I'm looking at this, and, I love you Peg, you know that, don't you? You know what I'm going to say. People come into the building, right now, Board Love Peg, she directs them all, I think. And the way that's set up is, the way I see that first floor set up is, who are they going to? They're walking in as it is their loss, but they see the Selectmen's Office, Peg's Administrative Assistant probably more than anybody but to find out where to go. And, I don't know, do you have the offices on the first floor in this reconfiguration that people go to the most? Do you feel? You don't feel they go to the Administrator's Office, to the Selectmen's Office?
I think they go to the Collector and the Treasurer.
Treasurer. Treasurer, yeah, that's more payroll and other departments than not the public so much.
Town Clerk, Collector.
Interesting point. I'm looking at one for Russell School, and you would walk in, and you'd be, and you're into Vestabules and Veterans Office, and interesting point.
It would be nice of that for Peg to be that first man. If you're going to do all this budgeting too, to have a central location for someone to come into, where to go.
I think the new one in Russell School has that, doesn't it? I'm looking at the first floor right here. Go to the second floor.
The Conservation Commission, that certainly doesn't have the traffic at the first floor.
You know, there's a lobby in the second floor. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's.
They're taking care of there. But not on the first.
Which floor do most people come in? Is it five or is it the back door?
I think it's split.
I think, I would say it's about you and the other.
It all depends on where they get to park.
I think one reason they moved the Treasurer downstairs is because of files. You know, all the personnel files and all the Treasurer's files, not all of them, but the weight of it.
And we're just, it's always more and more.
Shouldn't we have some proper floor up there for that?
Yeah, I believe that initiated a little bit of repair to the Town Hall at one point. A few beings in the basement and a few beings down in David's office had been installed to support that. So yeah, I can see moving the Treasurer's Office down. And a question, a question I have with Russell School, all these, you know, there's talk of repair, is there talk of use? And one thing I'm thinking, is there any consideration of, has that been looked at for park and rec? At Russell School, I'm going to bring them up again only because it's got a field adjacent to the schools which have the other fields they may use or don't use. Has that been considered? I see a smile, Dan.
Dan, does anybody know if the hallway walls are load-bearing walls?
Tim, do you know?
They seem to want to expose the hallway end.
Tim was here. He's gone.
They've got piers in this, and the piers take the trusses. The piers go horizontal, and then they run the two plates that way on top of the piers. So there's, the load-bearing walls are sitting on piers going this way, not that way.
Not the second floor. Excuse me, gentlemen, I'm trying to answer the lady's question. The question was if park and rec was considered for Russell School. I suppose it could be an option. So it's, they said, according to this report, putting park and rec in Russell School was not a cost prohibitive for the building. It would cost more to move them over there and renovate this building from park and rec than it would have been to either.
Put a condition on here?
Put them in here or keep them at North Hadley Hall. So that's basically where they left that, when that option was discussed as far as Russell School was concerned.
So the renovations that they've given estimates on for the Russell School, that is with other Town Offices in mind?
That's all Town Offices.
All Town Offices.
Yeah, I mean, that's, the caveat to the renovations over there would be to move all of the Town Offices to the new building over there. So basically, that would be your new Town Hall. Every office would be over there. And that's, you know, because that building is so large, it could handle that. And of course, you would have bigger offices, more space. I mean, Joni, even your accounting area is pretty tight.
And we've taken, we took over Planning Board's office.
I know.
We came over here. Yeah, it is tight.
And I mean, where are we going to be, where are we going to be 15 years from now? Probably not going to be smaller, so, I mean, that's, that's a lot of things to think about. I think some of the board mentioned to this company here about the renovations in Russell School, that perhaps park and rec would go to Town Hall. Because at one time, Town Hall, I'm an old man, I remember just barely when the second floor was an auditorium in Town Hall, with a stage and all that. Yeah. And that's, that's where it used to be. I don't know, they were talking about having an auditorium for their programs and all that kind of thing, but that wasn't mentioned in here, and we would have to get figures for that kind of thing. But. It's an option. It's an option. Whether it's a good one or not, I don't know.
I don't see park and rec.
For those of us that were here last week for the meeting, we talked about parks and recreation and the senior center being in the new building.
It's part of the option.
Everything's open for discussion.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how many, how much people have seen as far as Russell School, the new plans or potential of what that building would look like, and I don't know, Peg, do you have those on there? Basically, the elevator would be off of the side where the fire escape is, and that would be a full elevator. And then on the second floor, you would walk out of that elevator, and you'd be a long corridor into the middle of the building where there'd be a lobby area. And then, of course, off of that, you would have different offices, and then on the first floor, there would be offices. And our, the Selectmen's Meeting Room would be on the second floor next to that long corridor. The lobby would lead you into that meeting room.
I didn't see an elevator in here.
So that's.
I didn't see an elevator in the total price tag of this.
Well, it's got to be in there, it's in the plans. There it is. Yes, see? So there's the elevator, that's the first floor. The elevator, it's on the backside of the building, so that'd be your first floor. So what do you have there? You have Board of Assessors, Treasurer, Collector, Clerk. Drink and coffee room, Vestabule. So there's a lot more space in that building.
Yeah, they're using, they're utilizing the whole basement there too if we renovate that whole building.
You have in the basement, Jeff.
I think it's page before.
So that basement there doesn't have the dampness issues that we have at Town Hall, then?
Not after.
Well, it won't be after.
Because that's why we have so many files right now in the Treasurer's Office, because I had to pull them out of the basement.
Under ADA's.
Horrendous. Where's the basement?
Yeah, so in the basement, you would have the Planning Board, but have their own room. They'd have, they'd have two file rooms. You'd have a staff room, a mechanical room, corridor, custodial. You have a full electrical room. You'd have a boiler room, a mechanical room, and a vault. That would all be downstairs in the basement.
And staff room.
And a staff room. And there's even a room for coats and lockers. That would all be downstairs in the basement, according to these renovation plans. And of course, no, you have a, you have an elevator that's going to serve up all three of these floors, plus stairs.
Jon, did you have a chance to look at this ERA?
No, I haven't. And is that a full elevator or is that a lift?
That's a full elevator.
Well, that would be nice. I know people don't like that lift.
There's actually a 60-foot, 60-square-foot lobby next to the elevator. On the basement floor. And so you'd have the elevator and the stairs that come off the back of the building. You know, when you start looking at, like Jon, the Treasurer's room. In the new plan, you guys would be on the first floor, and you'd have 441 square feet. I'm not sure what you have now, but I guarantee it's not 441, I can look. So the offices would be a lot larger.
You have 393 now.
You have 393 now?
It would be.
Yeah, so you have 393 now, and you have 441. So the rooms should be bigger. One of the options, of course, that wasn't discussed, which is unpopular, but I feel I have to bring it up anyway, is to demolish Russell School. It's an option that I have to bring it up only because some people feel that the land is very important, that corner building, that corner lot, and that the town should not lose control of that lot, because it abuts all the school and it gives you a lot of frontage on Route 9. That's not something I'm in favor of, but I think it's my responsibility to tell you that that, of course, could be an option. And also, another option is to sell the building. And if we're to sell the building, I would hope that we would try to put a rider on it to keep it in housing and not into any particular kind of business. I would much rather, I'm just speaking for myself, I think it'd be a better idea if we were to sell it, to sell it for housing, so we wouldn't have a business in there and try to take up our park here at Town Hall. But these are options I'm just putting out for discussion.
Speaking of park and, Danny, over at Russell, what is there for spaces available over there versus in the Town Hall now?
Total. I don't know if we got that. In the plans. I don't think it addresses that, Jerry.
It has a total square foot somewhere.
There's 14 spaces now, and then they reconfigured the lot.
Probably 20 existing.
Russell School has a total square foot area, 10,530 square feet.
No, he's talking about parking, Jon. Parking. Okay, where was that?
Last page, 268.
Here it is, okay.
21.
Last page, 268. Now, it's almost like they don't have parking on the street, Jerry.
All the way to the end of those plans.
It's on the lawn. On the other side of the lawn, that's where he started. They have it up close to the building. They have them on both sides, they have them.
Yes.
They have, they have parking spaces up near the building, and then they have another set of parking spaces that encompass a lot of the existing parking, it's right along the street, but they also have another row on the inside of that, so you would have two rows of cars there. No, one. They basically brought all the parking in off the road. I'm assuming that this is.
This is not parking.
So there's about 19 existing spaces on the road, where you pull in from the road, and then they reconfigured the parking lot on the grass space, and they come up with about 18 spaces when they reconfigure in the grass. So you lose about one space, but you get the parking off the road, is what they did in this study. But there's 19 spaces now, and they're saying you're going to keep roughly the same amount.
And how many are there at Town Hall currently?
Not many. There's never one when I get there.
How many of the spaces in Russell School are currently being used by Town Hall? Because it seems to me that I've seen people go over there, park, and come over to Town Hall because they couldn't find a space in Town Hall.
I think it's a free-for-all. When, I know like Wednesday nights, when we have a meeting and the church has a function going on, you could drive around for 10 minutes looking for a spot.
Doesn't matter where you are.
Right. Either way, you're going to have, I think you're going to, either way in the future, parking potentially is going to be the largest obstacle we have in all of these buildings. I think we're going to have to get a little creative moving forward on how we park.
Yeah, I think if you move the Town Hall over to Russell School.
set of parking spaces that encompass a lot of the existing parking, it's right along the street, but they also have another row on the inside of that, so you would have two rows of cars there. No, one. They basically brought all the parking in off the road. I'm assuming that this is, this is not parking.
So there's about 19 existing spaces on the road, where you pull in from the road, and then they reconfigure the parking lot on the grass space, and then come up with about 18 spaces when they reconfigure in the grass. So you lose about one space, but you get the parking off the road, is what they did in this study. But there's 19 spaces now, and they're saying you're gonna keep roughly the same amount.
And how many are there at Town Hall currently?
Not many. There's never one when I get there.
How many of the spaces in Russell School are, are currently being used by Town Hall? Because it seems to me that I've seen people go over there, park, and come over to Town Hall because they couldn't find a space in Town Hall.
Well, I do that all the time. I think it's, it's a free-for-all. When, I know like on Wednesday nights, when we have a meeting and the church has a function going on, you could drive around for 10 minutes looking for a spot.
Doesn't matter where you are.
Right. Either way, you're gonna have, I think you're gonna, either way in the future, parking potentially is gonna be the largest obstacle we have in all of these buildings. I think we're gonna have to get a little creative moving forward on how we park.
Yeah, I think if you move the Town Hall over to Russell School, you've got that, the adjacent lots, now that the old gym's down, that they probably could make some more parking places down in that particular area where the corner is. You know, it's a little bit of a walk, but at least it's all off the road and safe in the parking lot.
You can put, make them in the grass there, and you're adding that, you're adding the elevator and the stairs to the back of the building.
Anyway.
That's gonna, that's gonna bring it closer to the grass and the baseball field.
Put a sidewalk in down along that curve going into Hopkins parking lot, and make it all accessible.
Make more handicapped accessible parking places.
Yes, that's correct.
So, you know, people that could make it up there, go down below, but...
Because you have to park up top, and they're gonna wheelchair her all the way around to the back for the handicap elevator.
Well, I mean, you could utilize that space the way they've got it drawn out, Willie, to make all those spaces really along the building handicapped accessible. I mean, you'd have...
Yep, yeah, but your elevator's still a part from the elevator.
Oh, yeah, you'd have to go on the corner to it.
The elevator's gonna be here.
The bottom. That's correct.
The elevator's gonna be here.
So all the cars would be parked right there, right there.
If you had like handicapped parking up front here, that's not, you know, this is what these sidewalks are for, they're leading, this sidewalk's leading to the elevator that would be in this portion of the building. So obviously, if you had additional parking down there towards the Hopkins parking lot or the old gym, you would wanna put the handicapped up here next to the building. It's a lot less.
What about extending some parking, it's up there to the north? Just extend that a little bit, make another 15 or...
You mean, just, you mean here?
Yeah. That's an option that could be discussed in later.
The only thing about, the only thing is, if you start approaching Route 9, then you start getting into visibility issues.
Okay.
And...
Good point.
You're better off, for you, having some spaces here, putting over floor parking lot down in a regular parking lot, than going towards Route 9.
You're right.
That's a, you need a parking garage.
No, not in Hadley.
We can park, we'll find parking.
Let's say a parking garage going up. Does anybody have any other comments? Andy? Before you came in, people made a comment about, what about, again, I think we talked about it last week, someone had mentioned Town Hall, Park and Rec, but I personally don't see it, and I don't know, I don't think you guys did either with your presentation on what you did for us.
Right, based on the needs that the department's already submitted, I don't, I don't see it without extensive renovations and, and how it would fit the joint plan that you were discussing at Hock the other night. I've seen the feasibility there, and, you know, we run into a lot of the issues that you're talking about here. And we've talked about even the location here.
So then, what would happen to Town Hall? Historical.
Maybe historical.
Storage, files.
Or you're gonna renovate Town Hall and make it work like they did over in Hatfield, and they just did a complete renovation of their Town Hall over there, took away the gym that was inside, where we played basketball many moons ago.
Not me, that was before my day.
Thank you.
To say it what I did, but anyway, that's how old I am. So they, they were able to do something with their Town Hall and make it more accessible. So I personally would like to take a trip over and see what they did do to their Town Hall, I wanna, I wanna do that, it's on my agenda to do.
Well, I think, to touch on Andy's point, is what would happen to Town Hall? I think if we were to renovate Russell School and move all the town offices over there, we would still have a use for that building. Think about the amount of storage that you need. I mean, the library's got things stored in North Hadley Hall. I mean, the beauty of having all your excess storage in Town Hall is, it's in a central location, it's not five, five miles down the road, it's right across the street. So, you know, there's a potential use for that building if we were to move out of it.
Right.
Yes. I think when we discuss, this is going on, EPW.
Wasn't it part of this, it says you can't renovate something unless you have a place for these people to go?
Well, yeah, yeah, obviously, that's, that's a large part of it, because any of these buildings that you start to renovate, it's not gonna be a short-term process, it's gonna take time, a lot of time. So, you know, if you're renovating a building, obviously, you can't be occupying it at the same time. So you're gonna have to move people temporarily until the renovation is completed. And we're not talking about, you know, two weeks worth of renovation, we're talking about a significant amount of work that has to be done. So there is part of that in planning, the strategy on how you go about it, what you do first, what you do second, and, and things like that, so...
Yes, Mr. Devine?
What are the terms of North Star's contract with the town? What is our commitment to them, and when is it through?
They have another 18 months.
Another 18 months, Jerry.
Okay, so if you were to start renovating that building, you could start for 18 months anyways?
That's correct.
Okay. And if they, that building was empty, this would be an issue, because if you were gonna move the people from Town Hall over to there, that building would be empty to begin with.
Correct.
Okay? And isn't one of the things we're trying to get away from, having too many buildings on the, on the towns? I mean, we currently, if, if Town Hall was moved over to there, wouldn't it behoove the town not to maintain the old Town Hall for heating purposes and insurance purposes and that type of thing? Wouldn't it behoove us to see whether or not the church or the farm museum had a use for the building?
Well, there's another use for it, too.
I know the farm museum is busting at its seams at this point in time now.
Right.
And if it was something that could come off of the, the expenses of the community, wouldn't that kinda be an asset to us moving over there? You have far more space over in this building there, so I think that if you were able to utilize Joni's storage space over there, maintain the people that are in this building now, wouldn't we be able to actually live within our means over at that building, because its square footage is so much larger than our current Town Hall?
Right.
I had another idea this morning when I woke up, actually. We got the American Legion right next door, that they're doing all kinds of fundraisers and looking for things, and if we're gonna be out of a building, particularly whichever one it is, if it's this one, or Town Hall, or...
North Hadley.
Or North Hadley Hall, we could maybe think about renting the upstairs of the American Legion and temporarily using that for housing for us throughout these renovations. You know, everybody's looking at what we're gonna do with these buildings, but we have, we're gonna be displaced for a minimum of a year or more on any major renovation.
Mr. Devine, were you more or less thinking, I don't know, I'm not gonna put words in anybody's mouth, but going along on that thought, that perhaps cutting Russell School out of it, too, in North Hadley Hall, and renovating Town Hall to perhaps make the offices a little bigger and build new for Park and Rec?
No, what he's, well, what he just mentioned was renovate Russell School and then take Town Hall...
Off the, off the...
You know, give it to the farm museum, or maybe even the church, if they have a need for it.
Would historical like to get back into there, maybe? I don't know.
Society?
Well, to add to Mr. Devine's point, that if, you know, you are gonna, the only way to really divest yourself from the maintenance and expenses of the building is to divest yourself of property. I don't, I mean, unless you were to get it, even if you got a tenant, you're still gonna have to maintain it.
Right.
And you can't let it go idle, because, well, you know what happens when you let it go idle.
And the selectmen thought about getting a piece of property that's big enough to build a brand-new Town Hall, and maybe take care of all the offices. That way, you'd have, say, on, just, just for Haha's East Street, the Bala property over there, or Benbin's property over on East Street, and you get a number, you could put a good-sized, brand-new building there, energy efficient. Move the Town Hall over there, move the Park and Rec over there, get rid of a couple buildings.
I mean, it's obviously an option, but if you build a brand-new building, then you have a bunch of old buildings, what are you gonna do with them?
You're gonna sell them. You sell the building, you get the money for the building, then you get tax money every single year.
Right.
So now, you've got money that you sold, that for selling it, you get tax money every year for that one, you do the same thing in North Hadley Hall, now you've got taxes coming in two places, and then you can make a decision as to what you're gonna do with the Town Hall. You've got everybody out of there, so you can decide whether you wanna leave it to somebody else or whatever, or move the seniors into there until you remodel this, fit, and fill it.
And to that point, isn't the state government contributing 62% over the last three years as an average to new buildings that are being built?
They are giving money, yes. And they will donate to money, monies if we're not in the floodplain like the Hopkins. So we could get money from the state, federal, I would imagine, to build a new building.
Well, the Russell School is out of the floodplain, correct?
It's in.
Yes.
No.
No.
I think it's in.
According to John.
Yes, it is.
Hopkins is, Hopkins is not in the floodplain, Russell School's not in the floodplain, Hopkins parking lot is not in the floodplain, and the old gym, where it was, was not in the floodplain, but the parking lot next to Russell School is the floodplain, and the parking lot south of Hopkins is floodplain. So you're gonna, when you're looking at the elementary school, a surveyor took elevations out there, and we thought that the parking lot were, going back, if we had to expand Hopkins, we found out that the Hopkins expansion, so-called completion of the H, would not be in the floodplain, it would miss it by inches, but it was out of the floodplain.
I know, there's all those old pictures of Russell School when they had the floods in the 30s, and it was high and dry, just like Town Hall, it was right up to the back door almost, but there it was. And you're saying, Mr. Nixon, you know of any kind of monies that are out there for building, building new for...
For, for Don's school?
Yeah. Yeah, I think there was. Okay, Andy, who's next?
Today, the grant money that, I was just watching on the news that had come out for emergency preparedness, our police and fire station, roughly, or any evacuation area, which, depending on how you name this new building, if you were to put it up, you know, could be a, a evacuation building also.
If you got, if you got a big auditorium there, you put a generator in there to take care of it.
Where you can house the people in a hurricane or tornado, and...
We don't have one in Hatfield.
Yes, you do.
Elementary school got an emergency generator.
They don't, the emergency generator doesn't take care of all the, the whole building. It only takes, Gary, kitchen and emergency lights.
Yes, right, right.
And oiling, so that's not considered proper. We're talking about Hopkins, but...
Yeah.
But can it be an emergency building?
You know, and last meeting, there was quite a bit of historical talk about the three corners we do have in the center of town, and the historical value of the town of Hadley, and that's, that's what we've all built on here, you know? And I would like to keep, you know, the buildings that are existing, no matter what we do with them, whether we keep them and renovate them, or, or sell them off and have them renovated by private concerns, to have them stay looking the way they do. I mean, that's, that's what Hadley is here right now in the center of town, along with North Hadley Hall.
Yes, Andy? Do you have a comment?
Me? No, I was just saying, there's a zoning downstairs, sorry, I think I went.
I have a question about selling the buildings, about what the procedure is, how long it might take, what has to happen, I can't recall selling a building.
So to sell any property, you'd need a town meeting vote, then you'd need to go out to bid using the assessed value as the minimum price.
Is it a majority?
It's a...
What do we need to sell the land to the North Hadley that we have?
You know, I would have to double-check as to whether it'd be a supermajority or a majority. My recollection is that it's a supermajority town meeting vote.
You'd sell some land to the able to knock down the old gym, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
No, I thought it was, he sold some land up in North Hadley. There's tax.
And went to auction, it was, it was taken by the tax, the town for back, taxes, and was sold at auction.
You gotta declare the property surplus, which is, goes to the town meeting, and then you have to do the proposal to sell it.
We're gonna do that with Huntington, right? We tried. It's still there. There's still property to sell on Huntington, too, that we never really have decided that we own.
You know, we're, we're already invested, we're already invested in the land that we've got these buildings on right now, and no matter who it is, they're gonna renovate them, I don't think they're just going to take them down and they're gonna be gone forever. So if somebody else can do it, I know it's gonna cost the town and taxpayers a little bit more money, but I would like to see them rebuilt and, and reclassified or reused. You know, when, when this DRA came through with that plan for the Town Hall at Russell School, I mean, nobody even really had a thought of that until we opened it up and they presented it to us, you know? And whatever, the Town Hall will, well, it might double in size, but pretty close, if they were to move the town offices there. And then, think about this place, and how many offices we've got here that are still vacant upstairs, the old classrooms that could be renovated. I mean, not piecemeal, you know, you'd have to renovate the whole building from the cellar here on up, and do it the right way, and probably good for another 100 years, you know?
Do you have any sense of what the assessed values are of the buildings that were discussed?
Yeah, they're all, for sure, they're all assessed buildings, that's the only cause they're in there.
The town has historically undervalued its buildings for assessment purposes, so we're in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $300,000 per building.
Pretty outrageous, I mean, if that's to be the minimum bid, that process would take place, I don't think that would be a really smart thing to do.
Exactly. Okay, so who else is gonna, okay.
Ginger.
Ginger.
I guess I would just like to say that I agree with John about the historical nature of the center of town, how sad it would be to just dismiss these buildings as not important. They're, they're assets to the town, and Russell School is, I mean, I had the opportunity to go through there with the old Mohawk folks when they did their study, and it's, it's got fabulous space, and if anyone has been in there, you know that, and it's, yes, it needs work, it all needs work, but it's a fabulous building. And it's important to remember that in these historic buildings, some of this work can be paid for with CPA funds, including elevators, and heating, and electricity, all of that is a preservation project. And we can do, get a bond against the CPA funds, which can go on for years, it's legal and encouraged by the state. So it's just another, it wouldn't take, it wouldn't be all the money, but it would take care of several millions dollars' worth of work if we needed to do that, if we wanted to do that. So there are lots of examples on, on the web of places, towns who have used CPA funds to restore their buildings, and I think if we want to keep these buildings, if we really want to maintain this historical nature of the center of town, which was so important at our, at our 350th celebration two years ago, then I think we can do it. And I think it's possible if we wanna put in the work, do the research, get the money, and do it, I think. And I feel that way about North Hadley Hall.
Yes, Joan?
Question. I know at one point, David Michkowski, who's an architect, had gone through, and he had gone into all of the offices, ass offices about what their space needs were, and he had done up plans for this building. Did anything ever happen with those? Were they looked at at all?
You've got that plan, Jerry?
Yeah, I had them last week, and I got them here today.
Now, did, were either one of DRA or Mohawk, did they look at these at all, in consideration of what... of what David's building? Mohawk looked at all the studies and things done with these?
Yes.
But no?
Mohawk was concerned with interior building, David was concerned with the exterior.
Of course, I don't know if maybe these weren't really looked at further because of the issue Tim spoke about with the earthquake requirements of a building now.
There's some rough plans, a little addition on the back from elevators and corridor through.
Did you see those?
Now, did these include, did these include all of the offices in town hall, which is built, correct, adding on to the building?
No, there was a meeting room, other offices, classrooms, kitchen, your center. Was a lot of, this is a first floor, planning board, water resources, nurse's office, reading rooms again. Historical council and aging.
And did that include the leaving some of the offices at town hall?
There was a full...
No, everything being moved here. Okay, but we never got a price tag on that. So is that interesting?
No, I had, had done a rule by a select man.
Okay, wow. All right.
If it, if it was viable to all of the floors.
All right.
But we have a quote here that said, "The roof of the addition was left designed as a feature four. Accordingly, framing and foundations do not have adequate capacity to support a second floor." That means we would probably have to redo part of this, right, John? I'm not an architect, but we'd have to redo part of it, probably shore it up.
Exactly. That was the big question we had, because they did not get into the structure of this building.
And then to Jones' point, it says, "In addition, the building does not meet current seismic, seismic requirements. A vertical expansion would require that the existing building be brought into full compliance," and in parentheses, "it has cost prohibitive." I'm just reading what they said.
But I don't think they've actually had a, a cost or a look for it.
Architect, the architect designed.
Yes, sir. Yeah. This building, I believe, was built the same time as the Hopkins, as part of the original Hopkins. And I think, I know the second floor of Hopkins, and probably the second floor is here, what they call lift-slab techniques. That's why they're saying exactly what they're saying.
The fellow that designed the second floor, designed this addition, he said it was built in accordance with the code and would, would take a second floor. And that was the fellow, that architect that drew this all up. And they had it built, so. Seismic, of course, that ever came into question, because that didn't inhabit, but he said this would take a second floor. And he designed it that way.
So as you all can see, we have still, after two meetings, nights of meetings, we have still several questions that basically have not come to any conclusion or direction. It's, we can take everybody's comment into what people would like done, but again, it's, it's not the majority. I would still say it would be the minority, because everybody has a special purpose for each place that we've talked about over the last two meetings. So we're still left with, which building do we start on? Which building do we get rid of? Do we get rid of any building? So we still have a lot of, of things that weren't come to any conclusion. And I feel like we need to pick something and go with it and...
You know, what I like to see, Joyce, you had the idea, was actually a ballot question of...
Referendum vote.
Yeah, non-binding or whatever. And the two most important buildings to the, to the taxpayers, which two buildings would you like to concentrate on?
Yeah, but you gotta, before you do that, you gotta outline an option, because we've got multiple options for each building.
Exactly.
So if you got people just checking out senior center, North Hadley Hall, Russell School, you're gonna get a raw count of a number, but then you're gonna turn around and say, "Okay, now we gotta make everything fit in the buildings that you wanna renovate." So I think, I'm not opposed to putting a ballot question out there for people to, to offer us an opinion, but I think we should present them with a floor plan of what the buildings will look like if you renovate them. These offices would be here, you know, right where everything would be, so people can understand what they're voting for or opposed to, rather than just, you know, putting a checkmark next to a box, next to a name of a building. I think there has to be a clear plan as to what that vote represents.
You have to have a clear plan, you have to have a clear amount of dollars, you have to have how much it's gonna be on their tax dollar, how much do they want their taxes increased, or if they want their taxes increased.
And we've only gone through four buildings.
So I mean, that's all a part of this whole thing that we need to do.
And I have to say this, that we've only gone through four buildings, and we haven't even discussed a DPW. Well, that's easy.
Yeah.
Of all that shit, start over. That's, that's another cost to the taxpayer and everything that hell all has to figure in. So I think we have to go and have a couple more meetings and just let everybody know the condition of all the buildings that are in this report.
Dan.
Yes?
Has anybody given any thought to building a new Hopkins? If you can get sixty-two percent redevelopment and utilizing the existing Hopkins Academy to house...
Yeah, last, last meeting, Mr. Kapaki came up with that idea of building a new school. And, and yeah, the funding is, is, how much, sixty-two percent?
Somebody said sixty-two percent earlier.
I know, it's quite a chunk of money, yeah, for sure.
It was sixty-two percent, but then when we went to do the addition for seventh and eighth grade a few years ago, it was less than sixty-two percent. And we didn't get it.
He's tempted to just do one, so it'd be interesting to see what...
And theirs was newer than Hopkins, but it was in such a disparate...
They qualified for much higher funding than Hadley does.
But you also have to get qualified, you have to get invited to join that program. So you have to submit your request that you want to do your building. Then you get invited to submit a proposal. Then you get, if your proposal's accepted, then you do the evaluation process. It's a long, lengthy process to get there.
You have to do a needs, you have to do a needs process.
So, I mean, it's not just the money's sitting there.
There's a lot of hands grabbing at it, too.
Yeah, there's a lot of hands. You know, I, I look at this and I see we need to do something, but we also need swing space, and we also have time requirements. So if we can't get into Russell for eighteen months, the libraries, to me, although we haven't talked about the library, it seems to be the farthest building along in the process of actually deciding what they need for their building. And I just still keep bringing the library and the senior center together to connect them with one elevator serving the two buildings, to give you new space for the library, give you some new space for this building right upstairs. And then you have the ability to start having some swing space and move around. So thinking about the time restrictions and where everybody is, you can't just move somebody out and put them on the corner. I still think that's, the more of our, I think about, the more and more I think that's the way to go.
Well, as we've been talking about over the last two years, this building was always the top of our list, our list to be the most viable building, out of all the buildings that, that we are looking at. It has the most potential.
And you've got the land, you've got the parking up back, you know? There is an adjacent piece of property there, I don't know if it would be available to us, but...
Yeah, and this building here needs, needs an elevator that goes to the third floor. Why do we have one that goes to the second? I just can't understand it. But if we don't have...
Hold front over it, it's fun.
No, I know, I hope to. Somehow that backs us into a corner, you know, bad decisions.
No, because you're gonna start from scratch anyway.
You're gonna have to put a, if you renovate it, you're gonna have to put a new elevator in anyways, you know? The catwalk over here, that you were talking about, I don't know of a better way to describe it.
Well, actually, I think more, it should be more of a building between the two.
He was actually, he was thinking about attaching both buildings. I was the one, I, I misinterpreted, misinterpreted what he said, and I, I thought he wanted like a bridge connecting the third floor to the third floor over there.
We have to do something.
See, they're talking about filling in this part of the driveway parking lot with...
The building.
He, he, he's talking about filling in with a building, I'm talking about just making a, a handicap, yeah, flyway or walkway across with glass on both sides.
Sounds picturesque.
Yeah.
But that way the library gets their elevator to the second floor.
In this building.
This, this, because like I said before, you got twenty-four, twenty-six hundred square feet in this building that's not used.
All due respect, with all the money that has been put into the library in, in recent years and the functional library, is that the priority of this town, to redo the library?
No.
No, no, no.
Or to focus on some of these buildings that need to be...
No, we're not doing redoing the library, Jerry, we're just adding an elevator for both buildings access.
Instead of giving two elevators, have one.
We're looking at the renovation of this building and, and accessing that building without an elevator, without the maintenance, without the installation of the second elevator.
I would propose you could put an elevator in the library for far less than you could put the catwalk up. Far less.
Yeah, but we still gotta access the third floor here. It's in there empty.
And you need two elevators, one there, one here. But in any case, you need a third, fourth elevator here. But to put the catwalk across would probably be significantly more money than an elevator that reaches all fours over there by a long shot.
So just put a building between the two buildings, is what I say.
And one elevator again.
One elevator.
Is that cheaper than either of those options?
We don't, we don't have any accurate figures. I, I mean, we've got two or three...
Jim's an engineer, so he does have some idea.
Yeah, I'll have costs, though.
No, not costs, but you...
Relative, relative, what would be required?
Right.
Gary Bird got an estimate for replacing that elevator, it was a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Which one? One in this building?
The one that's in this building.
And to go to the third floor? Really? Yes, Mr. Kapaki?
Just a comment, without getting too much into the design, but yeah, the elevator where it stands now is, you know, prevents the second level, second egress from the third floor. Doesn't, doesn't go all the way down, so you need to put an elevator in a different spot.
If you look at the, the big plan that was coming around, they had a little addition along with the renovation of this, the back and the elevator in the rear of it, on that big plane that's coming around.
That's right, you're right, Jones. I don't think the planes here show an elevator to the third floor.
Yeah, they don't.
No.
North Hadley and Russell School.
Yes, Mr. Kapaki?
Can I just ask about, think more about process than, I mean, I know it's easy for all getting down into the weeds about elevators and room design and stuff like that, but going back to the point about, you know, whether there's a referendum question on a, on a ballot or that kind of thing, it seems like there's enough information now, I mean, it seems so daunting, the task in front of the five of you trying to figure out where we go from here. And to your point, Joyce, everybody has their, kind of their own personal opinion or vested interest in some of these options. Is there a way to kind of rank everything that DRA has come up with? It seems like some of the issues with some, with certain buildings may be showstoppers, like things that are either just so ridiculously expensive or unwieldy that there's really not much chance that we're going to do that? And start kind of knocking some of those out to see if you can get it down to a more reasonable number of options? And so I'm just wondering kind of where you're going with that. I mean, even hearing like there's an eighteen-month agreement with the tenant, well, that happens all the time. And, you know, honestly, I would think that if that was the main item about that corner, and I know it's not, they're saying if that's one of the significant items, why couldn't we approach the tenant and talk about potentially buying them out a little bit earlier, if in fact it was gonna allow us to move forward with that faster? So, I mean, just trying to wrestle some of those obstacles.
I think, though, that, I take your point, I take it completely. But I think we still have to go for everybody's benefit, still talk about the DPW, still talk about the safety complex and the library, get it all out there, and then absolutely prioritize. I have it in my head that I'd like to prioritize, but I don't think it's fair to anybody, to the other departments we're discussing until we've discussed everything that's out there.
I just, I'd like to ask the same question I asked last meeting, and some of the same faces are here, but who, who thinks we really should have a building committee? Just a short hands question. Who does not?
I'm torn.
I'll quantify that. We can have a building committee as long as we pick it. How's that sound?
It's gonna be pretty strict, you know, the requirements could be on this committee.
I've been sitting, I've been sitting with these buildings, I sit on the Capitol Committee, so we've, we were actually the one that recommended that this study be done, this feasibility study be done, to tie in a lot of information. I mean, I, I have an idea of where we should start and how we should proceed, but I understand that that's, you know, my information and my thoughts. The only thing about it is if you have a building committee, you really have to pick the right people. Because everybody has emotional attachments to different things. And if it gets in there and it clouds, if it clouds the committee and it barks the committee down, then we're just turning the pages on the calendar. We're not getting anything done.
I agree.
However, however, that's a significant component of Hadley history, and you can't ignore that. You can't just...
No, I don't think every, I don't think anybody's ignoring it.
Exactly. You know, we went through it with the school, we went through it with the police and fire, and we had committees that, that really looked at every single viable option, you know, when we put those things.
You can combine both.
Yeah.
Dan, you said the, the requirements would be very strict. Can you elaborate a little bit more about that?
It'd be, in my view, and I'm only one vote on this board, someone that would have a fresh look at everything, probably a different viewpoint that we probably never thought of, but somebody that doesn't have an iron in the fire for, you know, you wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see somebody from, say, the fire department because we want to do another fire building. I know that...
Although you're gonna need him to...
Of course, of course, absolutely, of course, you need to do it. Well, that committee would have to meet with these different departments, but it would have to be just different. It would have to be some new faces, I think, and very well-qualified, very well-qualified.
Wouldn't the selectmen have the last option on picking that committee and let anybody apply for it instead? It sounds to me like to some people you don't want to have on that committee.
Nobody with vested interest.
That's what I'm hearing.
Mr. Max Moskowitz.
To be honest, I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be wise guy here, but the selectmen would be the only ones to predict that building committee.
Thank you.
Of course you're gonna pick them.
Let anybody apply, you guys have the final decision.
By their quality.
The other comment is that eighteen months left on the school over there. I propose to you that you won't be ready to do much of any building before eighteen months. So the eighteen months that they have left by their contract is nothing. That's not a hindrance at all. But, you know, there's other things to consider, like the substitution in North Hadley for the fire department. That's something you could get going on right now. But I would like the whole meetings for all of the buildings that we have. And then after that, have a discussion on a committee or whatever, but I'd like to get one thing done, you know, and then proceed from there if that's possible.
You know, if, if, if we're worried about fast-tracking it, which you might as all say we're gonna fast-track it, eighteen months is not that far down the road, now get a committee together in the next couple of weeks, anybody that's really interested, you know, and get all their letters of intent in here to us. And I don't see why we can't put a committee together.
I'm sorry, was that a motion? No, we're gonna have a discussion. As far as the committee, don't discuss it. Yes, Mr. Wiskel.
Yeah, I mean, one of the first tasks of the building committee should be to probably put together information for the referendum, if that's what you want to do.
Exactly.
You guys don't want to do that, and there's a lot of work, there's a lot of information out there. There's like so many different plans out there and, you know, just get it consolidated, put it in a format that everybody can understand, maybe there's three choices for each building, just explain it and have a night that you explain it or whatever, and then have people go out and vote. At least it's, it's not binding, it's just to get an idea what people are feeling.
Just, that's what we're trying to do with these meetings.
This is what we're trying to do here.
Let, let the committee do the, the work for you, get it together, you don't have to do it, you can concentrate on town business.
Yeah, I don't want everybody blaming me, but I'd like to be part of them going, "Good job, guys."
So we're really slowing down. We're really saying now, everyone was saying earlier, "Gotta do something to this building, gotta do something with the building." Now what I'm hearing from everyone here is, "We need a committee and we need to take a bigger approach to this." So now you're saying, "Slow down." So now you're saying slow down. I'm completely okay with that step. But I want everybody to understand that's really what you're saying and it will slow the process down. And I'm completely okay with it.
Well, that's making a wrong decision.
It is making a wrong decision. But I've been listening to people tell me, "Speed up, you gotta do some of these buildings. Speed up, you gotta do some of these buildings." Now you truly are saying, "Slow down, take a breath, start where you should've started before with a committee and let the committee do what they build it up." And that's fine with me, but I'm just...
Where did you hear that?
I've heard that from several people.
I'm actually just hearing a really strong request for leadership is really what I'm hearing. And it seems like people just wanna see action be taken. If that action is to say, "We've appointed a committee of non-vested interests who are gonna tell us what to do so that we can vote on it," that doesn't seem like slowing down. And I would argue also that you mentioned before about this referendum of getting an idea of what the town wants. And it seemed overwhelming, and there are so many choices of how people vote on it. But if you put out a very simple referendum of, "Do you prioritize historical preservation over cost?" And everyone says, or the majority or the supermajority says, "Yes." And you've eliminated several options, because then you have to look at what preserves historical interest. So I just think that no one's saying, "Slow down." I didn't go back saying, "Please speed up." But speed up thoughtfully with a long-term plan. And I think that the idea of having a committee so that you guys can focus on town business and you actually have somebody whose whole attention is on getting the ball rolling will help you.
Well, I mean, to touch on, to touch base with that, I'll take a poll of my fellow board members here. Because Guilford and John are fairly new to the game. Joyce, Dan and I, how many of you? I have a, I have a clear-cut vision, in my opinion, on what we should do. I was gonna make a motion, I don't know, 10 months ago. Does, does everybody have a clear vision of how to proceed? I mean, we're holding these public hearings to get the public involved and try and educate people. If people are thinking that we haven't, I know individually I have, I have a plan to proceed with these buildings in my head. I haven't made a motion, I haven't made a public because I knew we were having these public hearings. Does everybody else have an idea of how to proceed with these buildings?
I more or less do. I agree.
John? So you have five elected members who have...
Out of all the buildings, my main concerns was we're looking at $25 million, $30 million, let's say, for everything. If we were to renovate them all.
No, it's less than that.
Take, I'd say 19.
Yeah.
And it's actually less than 19.
And we don't know, because there's, there's too many variables in both of these reports still yet right now.
Let's toss some stuff out here right after that.
We're not doing another study.
No, absolutely. We've got plenty of information here, like someone just said. The most useful two buildings after the DRA report came out is Russell School turning out into the municipal offices and this building here for future use.
Can you back up a second? What I'm talking about is, is you've asked a question, two meetings in a row, about a building committee.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, I voted against it because, you know, I've been thinking about this for a year and a half. I have a clear-cut vision on how we should proceed. I don't think we need to get five or six new people in the room, give them all this information and say, you know, "Have at it." Ladies and gentlemen. I just asked if each one of us has a plan to proceed with these buildings. I know I made a declaration to Joyce and Dan over a year ago. You guys weren't on the board. If we wanna go back and have a building committee go through this information, come back to us and present ideas, that's one thing. And I would, I would be all in favor for that if each one of us does not have a clear vision on how to proceed with these buildings in question. But if we do, we should, we should sit down and discuss them in open forum so people can hear them. That's different than these public hearings. These public hearings are for the people in town to understand the information that we have that they might not have. And we've, we've held off having specific discussions on how we wanted to proceed with these buildings because we hadn't had these public hearings. That's why we're having these. If everybody has an idea of what they should, we should do, what building we should do first, how we should proceed, then we should have a discussion on that so people can hear what we're thinking. But to my point, though, don't you think we have that discussion after we discuss the other three buildings in this report? Well, we can, but I'm getting back to Guilford's point is, is this is a public hearing to educate people on the information that we've had individually for a while now. Okay? Now, this feasibility study is fairly new, but we've had all the studies that have led up to this. We've had that information. And like I said, we were, when I was chairman last year, or two years ago, was it? Last year. Last time I was chairman, I was, I was pushing the board to make a decision on how to proceed with this. And there were certain members that couldn't. Some of us had ideas on how we wanted to proceed, but everybody wanted to wait until we had public hearings so that we could get the information out to people. And that's what we're doing now. What I'm saying is, is if we all have a clear idea of what we wanna do and how we wanna proceed, then we don't need a building committee.
Question, Tom. How could you possibly...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
That's not, knowing how to proceed on the buildings is one thing. Knowing how to proceed now is another thing. I've always felt we should have a building committee here. One, we're gonna be required to have some type of committee to oversee it because of the power value. We're gonna have to have a, well, instead of clerk of works, we could have a clerk in the works. We're also gonna have to have an owner's representative. It's part by law now. And then we're gonna have to have some committee or some group to work with that person. So we're pretty much gonna be required to have a committee. And the question was, when do you have the committee? I've always been okay with bringing a committee in now, moving forward. So it's, you know how you wanna do the buildings. I know how I wanna do the process. I don't think I really wanna know how I wanna do the buildings.
Okay. That's fair. Okay. Anybody else on the board? Jim, have it here.
I was gonna say that from what you just said, that no matter whether you have a building committee to decide your next step or you have, or you're going to have a decision of what your vision is, you need a building committee to implement that because certainly nobody in, sitting at that table who has the time nor the qualifications is to go forward with something of this magnitude. And we've had some not-so-good results when we take on too much with what we have without having a proper committee behind it.
It's the same process as we did when we did the elementary school.
No, something wrong, whatever, I'm just saying you need a building committee of some sort to implement your vision or to go with your next step, whatever that might be. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Wiskewski?
Yeah, and I just wanna just say to Brian, we would, if, if there was a committee, the committee would love to hear your ideas. And I would expect that every member of the board would participate as well and take that into consideration. So it's not like you don't have a voice in all of this. But I think you need the committee also to sell it to the town because ultimately, they're gonna have to vote on it.
I think it's the same thing as appointing a building committee by the board of selectmen, giving them their vision and having them do the work and bringing it back to the board of selectmen for approval. And, you know, for the final consensus of what they feel that the town would approve of to go forward with these buildings.
Do you feel that these meetings are productive?
Actually, yes, this is great.
So I, that was, the step that I wanted to finish was the public meetings and then...
But I still have my own ideas.
Of course. We all...
We all shocked.
This is the place to bring them out, Joyce. I raise my opinion, everybody else hears.
I have voiced my opinion.
But hearing what people are saying now? I'm okay if we go ahead and put out, if we decide at our next meeting tomorrow night, if it's on the agenda tomorrow night? If we decide tomorrow night, yes, we're gonna have a committee and invite people to submit applications for the committee, I'm okay with if we're gonna still have meetings, also advertising for applications and bringing people in and have them going concurrently right now.
Exactly. To keep it moving.
But we could also make a motion tomorrow night to do something, too.
We could.
And, and appoint a building, you know, a building committee. But there may be another resolution also, so stay tuned for tomorrow.
It's never hard to be fun.
7 o'clock tomorrow night, we need an answer.
Well, we have, we have...
Did you put it on the front of the meeting or the back of it?
I can't remember.
I think it's after the budget.
We have budgets first that are, that we have to go through. We have...
Two budgets.
Three. Three budgets first and then the other. Yeah, budgets are part of the town business and they're very important. And it's also part of the town business so you get to know where your money's going. Any other questions?
Yeah, can you talk briefly about the written comments? People can submit if they're watching at home.
I thought we had, I thought we established a date and it's, I'm glad you brought it up, that we have a deadline, January 21st, for the meetings that we've had discussed now. But we, at our meeting tomorrow, will also address the other three buildings and what kind of agenda we'll have for those.
Will they be available to the public? Can we come and look at people's comments?
So, so just to, just to amplify a little bit, there is an open comment, written comment period after these two public hearings for anybody who wants to expand on their ideas or formalize their ideas, or if somebody in the viewing audience wants to submit their ideas, get them to the select board office. They are public documents and so they can be viewed, yes.
Well, one other quick comment about the building committee. It's gonna be tough to get the two-thirds vote to sell these historic town buildings. And I think the more people are involved in the discussion and the decision, the easier it's gonna be to get the votes you want to sell the buildings that you want to sell.
It's an open...
And I would, I would be reluctant to vote yes if, on a plan to sell buildings, if there wasn't a building committee. Looking at all sides today.
Yeah. Everybody's kinda saying, "You want a town meeting? Put up your arm like that." Everybody's equal. Anything else?
No, we don't have... Motion to adjourn?
It's a policy, Karen. We have a motion to adjourn.
All right. Any other comments? Here we go. Have a good evening. Thank you.